Fantastic. Alrighty. According to Apple, the time is four o'clock. I call this May twenty fourth regular meeting. To order and as a public service reminder, these meetings are always open to the public. They are meetings of the Board of Selectmen to conduct the ongoing business of the board. If you'd like to offer comment, there's an opportunity on the agenda to do so. When commenting, please state your name and title, title if applicable. If the meeting is interrupted due to disconnection, we will do our best to resume not less than thirty minutes from the time of interruption. And I have two things to add to the agenda. I'll make a motion to add Northwest Hills Regional Opioid Response Fund MOU under new business as item seven point five.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say or raise your hand?
Aye.
We didn't hear you Rufus. Think we just lost Rufus.
Lost Rufus. Oh.
I think here he comes.
And now he's back. That was quick.
We get him back spotlighted. Oh, we can't spotlight him because he's just on phone. Can you hear us? Okay, Rufus, Rufus, you popped out them back in. Just want to make sure you're connected.
You're also on mute Rufus.
You can just give us a high sign or put something into the chat Rufus. It looks like you're just on phone, so that might not be possible. Is he still with us?
I don't know. Yeah, he's he's on mute, so I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like he's just by phone. I'm going to assume because he's here and connected that he can hear us. But I can't spotlight him because he's only on phone. The second item that I'd like to add is motion, so sorry, motion to add park and rec updates to the top of new business.
Second.
Thank you. And Rufus, we need you to come off mute so that you can vote.
How do we do this?
I just send him a little message to unmute his phone. Well, I don't want it to hold up progress here. Rufus, if you can just work on unmuting your phone so that we can hear you and you can, we can know that you hear us. But I'll take a vote on that motion. All those in favor. So signify by either saying or raising your hand. Aye. Thank you.
I have, are you, are you done with additions there?
Yeah.
I I have one if that's okay. I would love to to put a Swift House update under old business, whatever number we want to decide there.
Let's add it at the end so that it doesn't disrupt the numbering for Joyce as eight point eleven, you can call it.
Eight point eleven. Okay.
A second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And Joyce, if you can just shoot Rufus, uh, ask him to unmute. Um, you can hit that button every couple of minutes just to try to get him to unmute so we can make sure that he can hear us and we can hear him. That would be great. So we have a whole bunch of minutes to approve. I have one, I saw Glenn, you submitted your corrections that are in the meeting folder. I just have two very simple corrections for the so I'll make a motion to approve the February twenty second special, the February twenty second regular, the March seventh special, the March ninth special, the March twenty second regular, the April thirteenth special, and the April twenty sixth regular Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. Which is everything on the list.
Second.
Thanks.
Okay.
So just I'm gonna boil it down to two quick items. On the February twenty second regular meeting on page four, Glenn, the motion down towards the bottom of the page. There was a it was not typed correctly. It was typed into the minutes that you made a motion to adopt the twenty twenty three Department approved revised SOP one dash seven point one and two. But in the middle, as you were saying the motion, I said tax abatement list. Don't forget to include that. And you said, yep. So my understanding was that your motion was that we were approving the twenty twenty three Department approved revised tax abatement list. And I think there was more on the end. It said like seven SOP one dash seven point one and two. Because the whole topic at that meeting was the KVFD tax abatement list. We were not talking about their SOP because they hadn't yet at that point submitted it to us. And you can see in the recording, if you listen carefully in the recording, I was talking over it, but unfortunately in the, you know, when these, the, there's a transcription service that transcribes what's being said, you can't, it doesn't effectively transcribe two voices on top of each other because it just can't. So I think that's where that was not effectively recorded. So that was for this, the February twenty second. And then just double checking on the, if we knew what from, I'm sorry, from the February twenty second special meeting, there was that four hundred and forty five dollars and thirty four cents an hour for Barbara. Barbara does a great job. I just don't think that it would be fiscally appropriate of us to increase her hourly rate that quite that much. I don't know if Joyce, you had a moment to take a look at what or listen to, re-listen to the meeting. I have not had a chance.
I did not.
Okay. Um.
I mean, it makes sense. It says four forty five point thirty four. It makes sense that that first four really is a dollar sign, but I, you know, I'm not exactly sure what that rate is.
Yeah, and it was, um, you know, the way that it's recorded in the minutes is really a what Barbara was was saying, and we don't in minutes where we shouldn't record what someone said, we should record what someone did. So I would say that we can omit that incorrect number without having to go back and find out what the correct number was. So I would like to omit that.
To omit the entire line.
Omit the four forty five point thirty four per hour piece.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Does that, is that notes that you can correct those minutes, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And have we heard from Rufus at all?
No, I tried texting him as well.
Okay.
He seems to be on the screen down here, but just not can't see his face. And he's still on mute.
Yeah, I only see him as a phone user.
Yes.
Based on the little, his icon is a little telephone. That means that he's only, you know, using a telephone to call in that he's not on a Zoom app or on you know, a web-based interface. So I'm, so the corrections, Glenn, did you want to detail anything about the corrections that you have in the folder?
Oh, yeah, just to say, uh, that they're quite minor. The March twenty second, two thousand twenty three regular BOS meeting. It should say it is up to the two neighbors to try to work it out. There's just just a missing key there. On on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty three special or select me meeting. There's a line that says five thousand out of lime. Three fifty five ball fields that should say line with an N. And and a super minor one. This happens all the time with with everyone in my life. April twenty six, two thousand twenty three regular Board of Selectmen meeting to amend the agenda to to have Glenn Sanchez say G L E N N. I am limited to ends and not one. That's all.
Okay, so, um.
Super.
I should have included as amended or with corrections. So I'll make an, I'll, I'll make an amendment. You know what? I'm going to rescind my motion. Sorry, Joyce.
Should rescind the second.
And if you rescind your second, we'll just start over.
I shall rescind the second.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from that are stated on the May twenty fourth meeting agenda with corrections as noted during this meeting and submitted in the public meeting folder.
Second.
Perfect.
Think this, I think this works.
Yes. Alrighty, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. For correspondence, we have a an email from a resident about a bear situation. Um. So there's, she was looking for direction on suggesting or advocating for a town ordinance where the town would would implement a fine, a monetary fine to discourage reckless, purposeful feeding of bears. I know that there are a couple of bills in the legislature, in the legislature right now. I think one of them has got some movements. It's not about this. It's about having a bear hunting season. I, I'm not sure about. I'd like to consider an ordinance, but it's really the difficulty is in the enforcement. Who is going to enforce a fine and how is, you know, when you start to look at? So let's say we pass an ordinance that there would be a twenty five dollar fine or twenty five and then fifty and then a hundred dollar fine. How would we be notified about an infraction or a violation of the ordinance? And then how would an investigation be conducted? And then who would find the person and what would we do as far as ensuring that we collect those fees, processing those fees and fines? So there's a lot to this, any sort of ordinance where you're where you're going to be charging fees or fines and there's enforcement. So it would, you know, if the board would like to consider it, we can talk to town council. That's probably a good place to start. We can also do some research into what other towns have done. But again, we have, you know, our ability to enforce something that can happen you know, in a fleeting moment could could be a little bit sticky. But I'm happy to, you know, that's just sort of starting off the conversation.
No, and I think it's a good conversation to have, you know, having seen a bear the size of a small car pass my house last summer. And Jean, you've had, you've had some bear encounters. I have the Town of Simsbury ordinance in front of me. Actually, it's it's called Town of Simsbury Ordinance to Prohibit the Intentional Feeding of Wildlife. Doesn't even specify bears. So, so, you know, I took a look at this one before the meeting. I intend to look at the Granby and Salisbury. But yeah, I would like to keep this on the agenda. I would like to, I would like to actually have ordinances from other towns in the Google Drive next time we meet. And I would also like to know if there are any towns who have considered this and have not adopted an ordinance and why. So if you have any information on that, that would be good. But, but I think.
I can ask the question out to the cog members.
Yes, yeah. So I would, I would, I mean, it's, it's, it's serious business. I mean, there, there are bears around and intentional feeding of bears is you know, yes, that whole situation is sticky, but people should not be doing that. You know, bears, you know, I nearly ran into a bear, you know, on a trail fairly recently. And it's, it's you know, we have to live with bears. And and I think, I think it deserves a bigger conversation and maybe even outside of this board. I mean, maybe another commission could be involved somehow. I don't know. So just a few thoughts.
Okay, and you know, it's definitely that time of year to send out the public messaging from deep. I had gotten in touch with the bear biologists at deep. They're willing to come and do a bear talk, which we can get on the schedule. And we can likely do it via Zoom. I think people are tending to like those sort of, I think people in general like things via Zoom. So we can get that on the books as well, so that people have an opportunity to have a Q and A with the folks up at deep. And I think there are still a lot of people who don't know that deep does. Obviously, they encourage the, you know, pulling your bird feeders and all the other, you know, mitigation strategies. And they also really, really want us to all report our bear sightings and anytime I see them come up through Facebook, if I'm in contact with someone outside of Facebook, I'll ask them, did you report the bear? And a little over fifty percent of the time, they, they say that they did not, or they didn't know that they could. So I send them the link. So I think maybe we can push out some public messaging in the next couple of weeks.
And and just to say, not even to single out bears. I mean, at Marvwood, we have a, a fox roaming around that you know, nearly, you know, he was traveling under my car the night. So, you know, so it's bears, you know, what do you do with various wildlife who just don't, don't go away into the woods? So.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it really goes back to when that bear biologist was standing in my backyard. And she said, right now, the mix, the balance is off. She said, the way the balance is supposed to be is that the bears are afraid of you. And right now you're afraid of the bear and we need to change the balance. And so those, you know, talking about those strategies. And again, we can get that out and sort of talk about the balance of wildlife, just in general, because we have all sorts of wildlife. So we'll come back with some samples. I'll ask out to the cog. I think Barkhamstead was thinking about it a couple of years ago. I'm not sure if they went through and and put one in place. And then we can just continue the conversation next month.
And could, could.
We'll send some public messaging.
Could you reach out to Kelly and just let Kelly know that we're, that we're thinking about this?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Alrighty. I thought I saw Rufus on.
I, I did, I did see him briefly.
Hey Rufus. Oh, he's, there he is. See.
There is. Can you hear us Rufus? Hey Rufus, give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
I think he's got the millennials at work.
We're halfway there.
Great. Then you're talking.
I've been listening to the whole thing.
Fantastic.
Hi Rufus, welcome to the party. Thanks.
Thanks for keeping at it to get back in here. We'll go to number four, public comment. I'll do a quick scan of the room. Looking for digital hands up. You don't see any. All right, we will keep making some forward motion. Next is tax refunds. I will make a motion to accept the submitted tax refunds totaling three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy nine cents.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Treasures report. Barbara, you're on deck or you're up.
You always calling me and I'm not ready.
Sorry.
Hold on. I try to do too many things. Okay, screen sharing. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I did submit this report this morning. Joyce said she put it in your shared folder. This is my typical report. Top of the report gives you activity last month versus the month before, the number of transactions in the dollar value of those transactions. The only outlier here is payroll in March. There were five pay periods in March instead of four. That's why that's so much higher. Everything else is pretty trending, pretty much the same. The deposits are really down right now because the tax bills are just waiting to go out as soon as the mill rate gets passed at the town meeting. The next section here is typical. It's the actuals versus the budget. And then the variance to the budget. And on the bottom, I put some notes, the pink or lavender notes are revenue notes and the blue notes are expenditure notes. I'm pointing out at this time that there will be five budget transfers required, and I put a little bit of explanation to each one of those. And for further explanation on the pension contribution correction, back in February, it came to my attention that the pension plan documents for the town of Kent supersede any internal policies and procedures or agreements. The pension plan documents do not formally, formally exclude pension calculation on health insurance opt out payments, PTO lump sum payments or severance payments. This information prompted me to do an audit on the pension contributions that were made to any employee that received any health insurance opt out payment, PTO lump sum payment or severance payment. The audit revealed that the pension contributions were short by a total of eight thousand three hundred and eighty seven dollars and four cents. There were four employees that were adjusted to make up for this. And that information has already been included in the expenditures for the budget, well, for this year's expenditures. And the only department that I see that it's going to really affect is going to be land use. The other departments where it's happened, there will be enough surplus in other expenditure lines to cover those variances. In addition to these five budget transfers, I do expect the building inspection department to go over budget due to required remittances to the state education fund, which are directly rated to the value, related to the value of the permits that are issued. So at this time, there's a projected expenditure budget surplus of two hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred and ninety three dollars, which is expenditures less than what was budgeted. However, revenues for the most part were better than budgeted. Therefore, by including the expenditure surplus, only sixty three thousand eight hundred and sixty three dollars plus or minus of the six hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars that was appropriated from the undesignated general fund is expected to be used. Does anyone have any questions on all of that? Hearing none. The other piece of my report is just the building inspector report. It explains the gross receipts that have been received from issuing building permits, the payment to the building inspector, the town share, and then the construction value of the permits. So through the end of April, forty million dollars worth of construction value permits were issued on that value. And there were four hundred and ninety two permits issued. The town share of the permit fee was budgeted at twenty two thousand dollars, but so far we've received thirty seven four oh two seventy six. So even though that can't be netted directly to the expense where we have to submit to the state education fund, it does help to offset that additional expenditure. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions Rufus or Glenn?
Nope. No, okay.
Jared just flew by my door. I know that he's in the process of logging on to Zoom. Is Justin with us? Justin will come back to Jared to give him another couple of minutes to log on. I will welcome Justin. He's gonna give us a quick update on the, some Kent affordable housing work that they have been doing.
Yes, thank you very much, Jean, and thank you very much for the reminder to submit the bear reports because I just saw one in our backyard two days ago. That's very helpful. So in the town housing plan that was unanimously approved by the Board of Selectmen and planning and zoning in area, some town of Kent land adjacent to South Common was identified as an area for future potentially for future affordable housing development. We hired cardinal engineering to take a look at the existing infrastructure there and prepare a base map, it's conceptual layouts. And they found the existing infrastructure was more than adequate for some existing for for additional housing, additional affordable housing. There's some topographical issues there in a number of places, but there's a nice relatively level area that's bounded by South Common. The tennis court parking lots, the transfer station and the town garage area. So in the soon we will be submitting a request to Board of Selectmen to potentially acquire that land. It's, it's would be a less than two acres in there and the exact proposed property lines have yet to be determined, but at this time would be quite interested in hearing your feedback on that.
Thanks, Justin. I think I've made my feedback many times pretty clear. I think this is one of the top priorities that we need to make sure that we are really proactive about continuing to make headway on and and create these types of opportunities. So I'm very grateful for you all for the work that you and Jocelyn have been doing. And really looking forward to hearing the next sort of level of conversation.
Good, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Justin.
I was gonna see Glenn and Rufus had any, any feedback.
So less than, so slightly less than two acres, you're saying?
Yes, the exact demarcations have yet to be, yet be made. Those need to be hashed out, but it is a relatively small area of currently unused Kent land.
Okay. Any preliminary idea of how much funding would be required?
A boatload. But all that, all that would be, would be coming from the, from the state. And maybe some, you know, some federal funds coming via the state, state as well. And so the way this works nowadays with getting that funding is the Department of Housing has has a, what's it called? A development engagement process deadline twice a year. And at that point, you want to submit, you pay a sort of just general application of sorts that to the Department of Housing and to take that step, you need to have site control and you need to have zoning approvals for. Application of sorts that, um, uh, to the department of housing and to take that step, you need to have site control and you need to have zoning approvals for it. Um, and so that would be coming up in November, um. It would be, I think it'd be ambitious to to make that deadline, uh, but if not, there's gonna be another round in the spring. So.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions or anything, Rufus?
Um, the land is north of. South Commons or above it, or it's not?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's to the north of South Commons. If you go into the, if you go into the tennis court, um, parking lot facing tennis courts, it's to your left. Uh, so the, the wooded brushy area up in there.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Justin. And so we'll keep this for next month and we'll, um, keep this on the agenda and we'll have more. Hopefully more to. To share next month.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
I, well, only other comment I have is I agree with Jean that. Affordable housing is a very. Very top priority. For Kent.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Justin. I'm going to keep shuffling the deck chairs and add in. Jared. Just back from. Something at Kent Center School. Thanks, Jared.
Yeah, no problem. So, um, I appreciate Jean, you're adding me in. Last minute, I just have three, um, three things to discuss. Um, the first is that Jean informed me that a, um, resident had contacted her. Um, expressing that she was hurt and upset with, um, comments I had directed toward that resident. Um, during a board of selectmen meeting, um, and those comments, you know, came following an exchange regarding park and recreation budget requests. And I thought about this and I realized that, you know, while I was upset regarding the exchange, um. That's no excuse to say something that would hurt another person, and I pride myself on being. Better than that. Um, obviously I work with children in the community to help them be better than that. And, um, you know, I know for certain that my mom and dad. Uh, taught me, um, you know, to be, to be kind and considerate. And, you know, better than the behavior I exhibited. So to that resident, I am, I apologize for making statements that upset you. And while we may disagree on things pertaining to my performance or park and recreation, um, that's no excuse to hurt someone's feelings. And, um. Like I said, I'm better than that and I apologize. Um, with that said, my mom and dad also taught me the importance of standing up for yourself and what you believe in. And in a more objective way than I did, um, last time than I did previously, I'd like to address some of the items. Um, that not only that resident, but several residents have brought up at different times and at various board and commission meetings. Um, I would like to note that, uh, these things have been addressed and discussed several times by myself. Um, and while I will be addressing them today, um, I'm not taking questions. It's not really a discussion. It's more I, I feel that those people deserve. Um, an answer, and then I do have to get back to the school for our three and four-year-old baseball program. Um, which, uh, we're ready to get started with, uh, you know, um, just about, you know, forty-five minutes. Um, so one of the things that, uh, I've noticed continues to come up are questions regarding the truck that Park and Recreation purchased. Uh, we purchased this truck from the state. Um, it was a used truck. We purchased it for six thousand dollars. And the reason that we did is because, um, myself and my staff, we were using our personal vehicles. For everything that we were doing and, um, it just got to the point where it was no longer efficient because we all have smaller vehicles. Um, and we were doing damage to our cars and I, I believe I relayed the story to you guys where a can of spray paint. Um, went off in the back of my car, and that's when I finally said to the commission, like, we really need, um. To have something. And, um, you know, I know there's been some criticism about this, but I'd just like to say. You know, the things that we're bringing back and forth to the schools, to the fields, to the parks. I mean, while not exactly the same, asking us to do so with our personal vehicles repeatedly would be the same as asking. You know, John over at Highway to bring bags of concrete out to work sites using his, you know. Toyota Camry. And I think when you put it in those, that, uh, that perspective, it kind of, uh, explains why we felt the need for it. And it's, it's certainly come in handy. Um, and, uh, once again, it was a decision that, um, almost all, not all, but almost all of the commission supported. And certainly made our department more efficient, and it's made me need to rely on Rick and his guys less, which allows them to be more efficient as well. Um, the next thing I noticed often discussed was regarding the senior lunches and, uh, I understand that in the past, um, park and recreation. Um, decided, uh, the commission decided that Park and Rec would not do, um, meals. Um, however, we don't really look at these as meals as much as we do parties and events. And, um, I know there's at least a few people on here who've been to them, who have volunteered at them. And, um, you know, there, as much as we serve food, it's a social gathering, it's a celebration. And just as we've run pizza parties and ice cream parties for the kids, it's the same thing we're doing, just for a different demographic. And, um, they're certainly well received. We're getting around forty people per event, and I've only heard good feedback. So I understand in the past it was done differently. This is something that, that has the commission's unanimous support, and I think if you were to survey the community, would have their support as well. Um. Another thing that has continued to come up, obviously, is my request and the commission's request for a full-timer. Um. I think there's a lot of different narratives and, and information going around and all of them. Um, it's getting a little fuzzy at this point, so I'd just like to reiterate quickly why I believe and the commission believes that this position is necessary. Um, right now we have an after-school program director, we have a summer camp director, um, and then we have myself. Now, yes, we do have some other, you know, part-time high school kids who help out here and there, but. That is, um, my very much in a, in a, a basic support role. So in, um, our continued effort to reimagine Parks and Rec and bring it to where it needs to be. Um, I put pitched the plan to then chairman, uh, commission chairman Julia Neff, and then ultimately to the commission. That we combine the after-school program director, the camp director, um, into one position and then. Also, our need for a actual assistant to help with our programs, activities and events. If you total all the hours that those three positions would do, if they were three different employees, it would add up to roughly, um, forty hours a week. So. Instead of, as has been discussed, um, repeatedly, struggling with, um, finding part-timers but also keeping part-timers. The decision to turn it into one full-time position, um, or at least request that we do was made and, um. You know, I, I understand why people, of course, are, um, you know, have concerns. And all I can do as director is tell you what I believe and as the commission, what we believe to be the best. Um, best way for us to accomplish our goals, and we believe that that is that. Now, if ultimately the board of selectmen, the board of finance. Believe that it is not, well, we of course respect any decisions or any, you know, discussion, um, that ensues. However. Once again, it's my professional opinion, and I have been in the field for fifteen years. I know that's been questioned by people. Um, it's my opinion that that is the best way forward. Um. It's also been said, and this one, uh, does, it does hurt a little bit, but that I, I'm, um, and I've heard this from several people now that I waste money. I'm frivolously spending and I'm not taking the taxpayers, um, you know, taxpayers, um. Uh, the burden on the taxpayer seriously. Um, and I would just like to say. I don't believe that's the case. Ultimately, only the board of selectmen, the board of finance, Barbara, ultimately only they can, you know, really look at what we're doing as a commission, what I'm doing. And make that determination, but I do put thought into every purchase I make and Rufus being a, I, uh, you know, de facto, uh. Um, rec commission member, you know that, um, you know, we discuss any large purchase, um, at length before making a decision. And, um. You know, so to that, to that, that thought process, I would just like to say, um, that. Uh, you may not agree with the purchase I make, but at the very least know that nothing is just done, um, just done without a good thought process behind it. Um, just a few more things and then I will wrap up. Um, and something else that continues to come up is the master plan. Uh, that was put into the capital plan before I began here. And it's still a few years out. And, um, I know there's, you know, been discussion about the fact that when I was interviewed, I discussed the master plan in my town and how I. Um, you know, felt that that master plan wasn't worth it, and that is one hundred percent the truth. However, I'm only one person and we have a seven-person rec commission. Um, actually nine, if you consider the alternates. And so, um. We will certainly be discussing that and deciding whether or not it needs to remain in the capital plan, but because the discussion hasn't happened yet. And the future of Emory Park is still up in the air. Um, it's just something that has to remain. With respect to Emory Park, um, I'd just like to reiterate, the pool was shut down. Um, the health department came in and said that they felt it needed to be re-engineered. That type of, uh, that type of job and the ensuing construction would be a minimum, no less than six figures. There is money in the capital plan. But, uh, the commission and myself, we believe until there's a clear understanding of what needs to happen with that park. That just jumping headfirst into that just because the money is there, uh, we don't believe that that is the best, um, or the responsible thing to do. Because ultimately there is evidence in the plan of conservation development and anecdotal evidence for sure. That there's a large segment of this population that is not interested in the pool at Emory Park. So to just move forward with that without thinking carefully, taking our time and exploring all options, um, that it would be. That wouldn't be prudent. And so once again, we stand by that decision. And, um, you know, I, I've obviously discussed this several times. And all I can leave off with is the fact that it is on our, it is on our radar and, um, it's something that we will be addressing. And I will say this, especially. If we do get that second full-timer, me as a director, I'll be able to start to focus more on the, the macro instead of the micro. And the macro being those overarching goals for the department, um, including park planning. Um. And, uh. Looking at my list here, I believe that's everything that I needed to address. So the last thing I'd like to move on to is the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, Jean and I have been hard at work on, um. Getting everything coordinated and, um, I'm really happy to report that basically all the plans are in place. Um, we've been doing a really good job, I think, of getting the word out. Working with the land trust, working with the Lions Club to make sure that everyone is ready for it, aware of it, and, um, you know, certainly gonna come out, watch the parade. Hang out with the Lions Club for some ice cream after and then, you know, head down to the land trust field to, uh, have a nice barbecue and party. So, um, I'd just like to, you know, um, let you guys know that, yes, it's my first time heading this up. But I think we're, uh, we got things well in order and, um, you know, certainly. I invite everybody to come out and, um, you know, see what, see what it's all about because it's gonna be, um, a really great, uh, great opportunity to. Um, you know, celebrate Memorial Day in a way that should be celebrated, taking time to honor those. That we've lost, but then also coming together afterwards with the Lions Club and the Land Trust. To celebrate, uh, you know, our community and, you know, Memorial Day is about the people that we lost who fought for our freedom. And one of the best ways that we can celebrate it is by coming together and enjoying that. Um, so invite everybody out to do that and, uh, thank you to everyone who's helped me along the way to, uh, make sure we're rocking and rolling. So. That is all I have, um, for today. I appreciate you guys giving me the microphone, the chance to speak and certainly look forward to continuing to move, uh. Move on and make, uh, good progress with Parks and Rec. Have a great day, guys.
Thanks, Jared. And I know you're dashing off, um. We will, as long as the weather cooperates, we will have a flyover by the, um. Connecticut Air National Support or Air National Guard Support. So that's kind of exciting. I know that's sort of like a big pull for folks. Um. Alrighty, so we are at. Appointments. Seven two one, uh, planning and zoning recommendation for filling of that alternate vacancy. Um. There's a memo in the folder and I will make a motion. To appoint Anthony Palumbo as a planning and zoning alternate, alternate with a term expiration of eleven thirty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Am I missing anything from that, uh, motion, Joyce?
No.
Alrighty. Any questions? He currently is a member, um, ties on the call, right? Dude, I see her. I have to turn off my, um, participants in order to fit everything.
Yeah, I'm here.
Um, he's currently an inland wetlands alternate or member?
He, he's an alternate on the inland wetlands commission and he'll be an alternate on the planning and zoning as well.
Great. Thank you.
I was gonna say, we've seen his, uh, name before, recently.
Yeah.
But I was seeing double. Okay.
Alrighty, all those in favor? Aye. Great. And we have a number of other. Uh, reappointments to make. I did reach out to Lori Sheesal about the H R R A alternate. We had a conversation probably a year ago. Um. About whether or not she wanted to continue once the next term was up, um. I haven't had a conversation with her lately. The alternate really is sort of a, um. Just, uh, a just in case. I've never had to, um, call her up. Um. So I think we can go ahead.
Gee, I did confirm with her, she is, she is willing to do it.
Oh, you did? Okay. And Doug Branson?
I did not hear back from him.
Okay. So the Charter Communications Advisory Council is, um, a great group of folks who, if somebody has. Um, an issue or a dispute with, um, their. Charter Communications Service, um, they're able to reach out to Doug and he goes to regular meetings. Um, so those are, that's a two-year appointment. Um. So do you want to make these three separate? Do you want to make them all together?
Might as well make them all together.
Hey, I'm happy to hear. A motion if somebody would like to make one. I don't wanna. Make them all.
Uh, make a motion that we. Reappoint. Jean Speck and, and. Is a representative to, on, uh. Who's, uh, H R R A. As a rep for three years to expire six thirty twenty twenty-six and Dolores Sheesaw. To serve as an alternate on H R R A. With the same. Date of expiration. And Doug Branson for the Charter Communications Advisory Council. To expire six thirty twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that. Or actually, I'm sorry, Glenn, you can go ahead and.
Second, I'll second that.
Great. Alrighty, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. We already attended to the Memorial Day Parade update, uh, the National Wear Orange Day. Wear Orange Day Resolution. Also known as, um. National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I just put the resolution in the folder. I apologize. So the, they had come to us last year to ask us if we would, um, pass a resolution. They. As many, many of these organizations do, they provide you with the resolution language. Um, so that you don't have to. Um, frankly, struggle through a, uh, resolution. Um. It was just too close to whatever monthly meeting it was last year, so I. Got back in touch and said, we're not gonna be able to make it happen. Um, Stanford this year was the first town in Connecticut. To pass a resolution. I can put their resolution in the folder as well. It. The language is lifted right from there, um, which is also from. Hang on one second. Um, the. Oh, give me a second to remember what the name of the organization is, the Connecticut. Um. Apologies. The. Connecticut, uh, organization called Connecticut Against Gun Violence. Um, they provided the language to Stanford, so they. The, um, the statistical information there has all been vetted through the, um. The organization, the C A G V organization. Um, if we'd like to move this to a special meeting so y'all can read it. Um, and I can add the Stanford resolution. Um, we can do that. Um, it is June second. So it's right around the corner. We could have a, you know, a quick meeting on June first. So that you have time to read it. Again, I apologize. As you can see, I have a different background now. Which is the result of the move that happened yesterday and P S, thank you to D P W, which I'll thank them again at the end of the meeting. Um. But it's been a little crazy here. I'm still trying to find half of the stuff that I needed for today's meeting. Um. So it's up to the board, whichever you would like to do.
Now, I think this is, um, this is very worthwhile. This is very important. Um, I would definitely like to consider this. Um, I'm actually reading the text of, uh. The U S H R one one four four that was passed last year. Um, yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually, as we're talking here, I'm.
It's a little bit, um. Little, I, I had pulled that language as well, um, but it did. I actually liked the language from the C A G V. It was a little more. I actually liked the language from the C A G V. It was a little more um, Connecticut centric.
Hmm, yes, no, that's good. No, I think this is very worthwhile. I think this is something we should consider, uh, and um. Uh, I would like to have a special meeting. Yeah, I'd like to look at this a little more deeply, uh, and um, I don't mind having a special meeting. I can do that. And, and in, in conjunction with that, actually, just a, just a thought, um, you know, we as a board, we've been meeting for what, a year and a half now? Uh, we've, we've passed uh, a, a number of resolutions. Um, I was actually going through notes to figure out how many we've passed. Um, and um, you know, I don't know if there's like um. A list of this somewhere, if there's a place where we can see, just to make sure that the resolutions we pass are that, that, that we're, we're doing. These resolutions, we're following through on all of them, uh, and to give us an idea of um, of what we've done, uh, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea and I, it's been something that's sort of. Gets in my hopper and then um, goes down a little bit of a rabbit hole, because if we're then passing. Like, where do you start and stop with the, with what resolutions? Because I think it would be great to have a page that has, you know, on the Board of Selectmen subpage. And be able to list these so people can see them and read them. Um. Do we want to, you know, at our annual meeting, there are things that we resolve to do, which are technically resolutions. Um, for things like the Sidewat project, that was a resolution, so. Maybe I can come back at next month's meeting and pull together. The resolutions that we all have passed in the last year and a half, and then we can have a little bit of a. Further discussion about how we want to um, share that, you know, get them up on the website. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yeah, just, just, just figuring out how, you know, how, how we, how we follow through on resolutions. And if we have a list of uh, of what we've done ourselves, we can, we could, we can help that process, so um, so yes.
Well, that's a good idea. Darlene just posted, we could put them in our annual report. It's a great starting place, for sure.
Perfect.
I don't know if everybody else is, but the sky just turned a very, very different color and it became very blustery, so. Hopefully, we won't lose connectivity, but if we do, just a reminder that it'll be at least thirty minutes from if we get cut off. So we'll um. We'll get those all together and have a further discussion about it next month, and then we will look to. Do a special meeting on June first.
June first, let's see, uh. The Thursday, I can do that. What time?
I can do whatever time works for y'all.
Anytime during that day. I could do morning, afternoon.
So can I? Maybe in the morning?
Let's go morning. What's the earliest we've ever gone?
Want to do ten o'clock?
Let's do ten o'clock.
Okay, June first. Ten AM. Alright, I will get the Stanford one out, um. This one and I'll do a little bit more digging around, see what else there is out there.
Great, thank you.
Uh, next seven point five Northwest Regional. I'm sorry, Northwest Hills Regional Opioid Response Fund M O U. So I sent that out to the board a few days ago. This is a follow-up from last month and I think two months before. We have, uh, towns have received through the um, Attorney General's Office. Who've been fighting for this for a bunch of years now. Um, there have been a number of settlements and. Towns are, are receiving um, funds from these settlements. I think there's two or three. Similar to the tobacco settlements, these are going to be multi-year. Um, settlements where we get a, a little pot of money for many years to come. The cog. Leo Gio came at last month's meeting, did a presentation to talk to us about. The initiative that the cog has put together to um, pool the money from the region. To be able to come up with uh, regional initiatives that will help the entire region. Uh, when it comes to the opioid response or the opioid epidemic. Um, they've asked me to sit on that committee to um, discuss the, how we would be spending that money. They have an M O U that we need to sign. And it was in the folder a couple of days ago, um. And so I will make a motion to um. Um, um, um. The one motion I didn't pre-write, um. Collaborate with the cog. On the uh, Regional Opioid Response Fund and sign the M O U.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Pretty straightforward M O U, memorandum of understanding, sorry to do the acronyms. All those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Alrighty. All business. Uh, we have a couple of Conservation Commission updates. I'm gonna shuffle the deck chair, so it looks like Connie, are you, um, there you are. You can unmute. I was hoping to pin you into the group here.
Sure, and uh, there seems to be some rain that may blow on me, uh, but I didn't move my setup until, uh, because I knew that we were next. Um, so uh, the, the first item, the land acquisition fund, I don't have an update for you this month. April's actually our busiest month with the Conservation Commission, so we have like three public events, um, the library program. The town cleanup, which I'm sure you're aware of, and uh, and our um, Arbor Day event with the school. So uh, next month for that, uh, plus we've been rather busy with um, the right to farm ordinance, so. I, just by way of update, um, about that, since that is also on the agenda. I, you know, Jean, you asked the Conservation Commission in its April meeting to examine. Possible revisions to the right to farm ordinance in order to make it clearer, because. Uh, it is vague about how it should operate and it also is only being used. Punitively against farmers as opposed to protectively, which was not the intention. Uh, in twenty fifteen when it was enacted. So um, in our meeting last week, the Conservation Commission began to review uh, some uh, proposed revisions, including um. First and foremost, renaming that ordinance so that it is clear that it is an ordinance to protect. Farms and farmers against nuisance claims, because that, uh, the idea of right to farm really doesn't quite. Communicate uh, to most people what this ordinance is really about. Uh, so in any case, in our meeting last week, we turned that uh, ordinance around, you know, we, we uh, looked at the um. First draft of proposed revisions and uh, we'll hold a special meeting next week, uh, hopefully to finalize. Our proposed revisions, uh, after which point it should go to the town attorney. And then provided that, uh, you know, all the language is. Fine with the town attorney or revised in order to make that uh, comport with what it needs to. Um, then it'll go on to P and Z and to the Board of Selectmen. I meantime, also in our meeting last week, uh, we discussed uh, with Jean. Uh, and concluded once again, uh, that the Board of Selectmen should dismiss this current complaint. Since the town doesn't have a noise or a blight ordinance, so uh, in other words. Uh, if there weren't a right to farm ordinance. Then this complaint could never have arisen, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen would have. Not been able to do a thing about it. Uh, and so the right to farm ordinance, which is meant to be protective against farmers, shouldn't. Be used to open a door for a neighbor to bring a nuisance suit based on noise or blight. I, when there isn't an avenue to do that for any other citizen of the town of Kent. Against their neighbor who's not a farmer. So that was the recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen close the book on this current complaint. Now, no reason to keep that open. Uh, please keep it on the agenda, though. Knowing that we are going to come to you with some proposed revisions to make it clearer how the right to farm ordinance should be used.
Thanks, Connie. Yeah, all of any questions, I, I would be ready to make a motion regarding the. Um, the right to farm complaint.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to accept the recommendation of the Conservation Commission to dismiss the current right to farm complaint. Due to a lack of a nuisance nor noise ordinance.
Second.
Alrighty, any further questions? Alrighty, all those in favor?
Alright.
My, thank you. Thanks, Connie, and I appreciate this, the. I feel like we've had a number of really thorough, thoughtful, very thoughtful conversations about. This ordinance, that's, you know, an important ordinance and it was two thousand fifteen when it was passed, I think, and um. You know, as, as they say, times have, are changing and um, I think it's smart for you to all to be. Sort of reconsidering. Where to go with it.
And Jean, I don't know what uh, you meant with the third item on the agenda. I don't really. I don't, there's no update from the Conservation Commission on that.
Okay. So, so reported. I wanted, I didn't want it to um. Fall off. I know Wendy has been working on, um, you know, in the background on that, um. It's a report that will come from UConn about the usage, um, but I didn't. You know, I didn't want to just omit it out of hand.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then just to say, as for the land acquisition funds, we're going to, to wait on that?
Yeah.
Eight point one, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, next eight point two, the draft hiring policy. Glenn, you're up.
Uh, yes, I wrote this, uh, wrote this a while ago and um, you know, it, it, it came up about, uh, you know, just hiring practices here in town. And um, you know, and trying to um, streamline that process, or at least start to streamline that process. How does, you know, do we have anything? Uh, any language about this, and it seems we don't. Um, so I wrote this a while back, uh, it was, um, it was, it was too late to get into the last meeting. I apologize for that. Uh, but uh, but it's in, it's in the drive and I'd like to just read it out loud and we can talk about it and um, see where we want to go with it, if that's okay?
Yep.
Right, uh, so uh, so a, a job description posted on the town of Kent website for at least two weeks. Is required before boards and commissions may hire new employees. Exceptions may be made for emergency hires at the discretion of the first selectman. Rip it up. What do you think about that?
So I'm just opening up the um, policy manual for what's there now. So it, in theory, would be um. An addition to. The vacancy, um, so I'm going to go on screen share for a second here. Um, sorry. Hold on one sec. Alrighty. Eight nine-ish. Wait, it's pouring rain.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this is under, just to go back up a little bit, um. This Hiring Policies and Process section. So it seems that that would be appropriate place for that to get inserted. Could be here. Under vacancies.
Go back, go back to the beginning, Jean. So. Alright. So you're looking at, at nine different departments, okay, alright. Can you go a little slower as you scroll through?
Yeah, so this is the language that, that um. Glenn has put in here would really just be um, added to the end of the vacancies subsection. Which is. Here. The way that the um. This subsection is right now, when you think about the. Process and the timeframe, so let's say on. February first, um. A clerk. Notifies their supervisor, department head, that they're going, they just won lottery, so they're going to be, go. Buy a uh, an island in Fiji, and their last day will be February fifteenth. But the, and so the department head notifies the Board of Selectmen that day on February first in writing. The Board of Selectmen still needs to um. Decide, determine if the town will fill the vacancy, so that. In theory, happens at the monthly Board of Selectmen meeting, which for us right now is the fourth Wednesday of the month. So now you have a department who has been notified on February first. But we're not even going to talk about it until. February, whatever, twenty-second, um. And in the meanwhile, that employee has left town service. So now the department head is sort of stuck with nobody, um. So the, the timeliness does, can become an issue. It, it came up with um, the assessor. I know Jen's on the call, um, and we were able to, the timing did work out, so that we were able to do a, a quick turnaround. Um, but then when you add in two weeks or, um, and I agree with the two weeks, but it does. It, it has a potential to really extend out how long it could take to hire someone and. You know, state government, the hiring process is longer. Um, federal government, it's the same, you know, it's very long and we need to make sure that we're, you know, hiring. Qualified candidates and that we're, you know, going through a proper process, but I just want to make sure that. We're all aware that, um. It could, I hate to use the word hamstring, but um. It could delay, I mean, we can always have a special meeting.
Why? There's a, th- there is a job, it's been filled. Why would? Why would it be up to the Board of Selectmen to determine if the vacancy should be filled? Why not the? Head of the department? We've already, I mean, there's a job there, like, you say, one of the town crew has to leave. It would be up to Rick to just say to, you know, hey, I need this filled right away. It's, uh, you know, it's our busy, busy season, or he decides we can delay it or whatever. But that doesn't mean that, you know, why are you waiting to advertise? To fill it for the board to decide. I mean, it, it's already a job that. Has been approved under the budget and everything else. I mean, it just, somebody leaves, there's an emergency or somebody. You know, falls dead on the job or whatever. I don't understand. I don't understand why. You have to. Have the Board of Selectmen determine if the town's gonna fill the vacancy.
So the, the Board of Selectmen is in this, there is language in the statute that they are the hiring authority. Um, I'd have to. Check with town council, cause this. You know, as far as I know that this, as far as I know, the cur- that. Manual was vetted by. Legal counsel, um. Barbara, Joyce, do you all have any other, um? Pearls of wisdom or, you know, gaps or anything that we're not aware of as far as um. Labor? Like Department of Labor, federal, state?
Off the cuff, no. I would need a little bit of time.
I mean, ultimately, we would get involved because we have to make a decision to hire. But if there's a vacancy. I would think that the department head. As it says in the. Third sentence. Post a job opening notice internally and start at least the process. And um, you know, if, if the department head, you know. It's not like we're hiring. Um. A brand new employee or something, we're filling the vacancy. So we've already determined at a previous date. Via discussions left and right, that, that job was necessary. Now, the board, you know, the department head might, might say at this time. We don't need to fill the vacancy immediately. Our recommendation is to wait, and then we wait, but. If not. We shouldn't have to hold up the beginning of advertising for a replacement.
I'm gonna call on Donna, cause I know she's got a lot of experience with um, these sorts of things, Donna.
Hi, yeah, um, I did take a look at the hiring policy and process, which is um, chapter number three. Um, I did make some changes to it, I don't know if you want me to share that with you guys, so that you can see the changes that I've made. One of the things that was glaringly absent is the fact that, you know, there are some departments within that town hall. Um, that have um, and work with and for commissions and boards. So you need to bring them into the loop. Um, so that was one of the things that I did add. Um, I can't speak to whether or not the selectmen are statutorily, um, the hiring. Entity, I, I can't answer that question, um. But um. I, I agree with Rufus. You, you're pushing out the positive, especially when, when the town halls departments are working as lean as they are right now. That um, anybody leaving um, is, is a detriment, so. I think Rufus is absolutely right, the department head um, should know. If that job needs to be filled or not, and they shouldn't be penalized, which is what I consider it to be, to wait until the next. Um. Meeting, whenever that shall be, and then, and then have to post it for another two weeks. Um, with regard to the sentence or the two sentences that Glenn brought up, it's not a job description that would be posted, it would be a job opening. Um, that would be posted on the town's website and, and where else, wherever else it needed to go. Um, and then, um, I did take some things out with regard to the job descriptions. I don't believe that the first selectman should be writing the job descriptions, I don't believe. That the other two selectmen should be writing job descriptions, nobody knows how a department runs better than a department head.
Um, and we're really talking about, we were talking about this two weeks. And I think if we're gonna get into more detail, we should. Have, have this on either the next meeting or have a special meeting, we're gonna have another special meeting, um. Aside from the June first one, a little further down in the agenda, and you know, I'm not feeling comfortable. Doing anything with. The specific um, language that we were looking to insert, I think we need to. Talk to town council, CCM has their labor attorney who is. A rock star, and I think we need to drill down in this whole section. And just. Sort of start over. Um, there's just a lot that it, I don't think this one thing is gonna improve it and I, uh, there's other. Um, issues that I have. I'm just not ready to, to really have more of a discussion, I think we need to have a deeper discussion at another time.
Would you like me to share what I had put together, or are you tossing that out with the um, the bath water?
No, I, I would like.
No, if you want to send it to the board, that's fine.
Yep.
Feedback suggestions.
Okay, and um, and I still have not gotten an answer as to why, um. The, the rehiring in my, for my position, had to go through as many. Um, reiterations and hoops, and none of the other ones did, so, um, I, I know that. That's why it's such a, a touchy subject for me, so um, I'm gonna just put that out there again, that I still haven't gotten an answer. And I will lower my hand.
Thanks Donna.
Thank you Donna.
Thanks, so, um.
Yeah, can I, I'll just say like one last thing, I mean, mo- mostly what I was looking at was just the timing of, of uh, you know, placing an opening or vacancy, you know. It di- didn't seem to be any kind of timeframe on what I just saw there on the screen share. Um, and, you know, but this entire conversation opens up a, a many, many questions, so. I don't, I don't mind, uh, you know, talking about this the next time, whether it's a special meeting or regular, but I would like to. Start to drill down on this, um, so. Just to say that.
Okay. Thanks. Alrighty. Uh, draft update to town hall closure policy. There's a, um. Document that Joyce created, um, I would like to. Look at it from a red line document perspective, so we can see. As the document, if I can find it. It's here. Way too much. Way too many documents open. There we go. Finally found it. Okay. Everybody see that? Let me just change the view, so it's a little bit bigger. So previously, in the, um. In the, in this section, the list was chopped up into three. Um. Three lists, I have, I. Not really sure why it was chopped up into three, of course, that's the one thing I don't have in front of me, um. But what this does is, it just has created an approved holidays list. We added the Juneteenth National Independence Day, that's what the federal government calls it, um. The list with the dates, the dates have been added, those weren't in there previously. Um, those are what OPM, the um, federal. Policy and management folks put in there, um. We changed it to include part-time employees, you'll see up here. At the top. And then, there's this whole, um. Much, uh, just cumbersome and confusing language, um, we really. Tried to make it um, straightforward. So let's, um. Try and think if this was the one, no, it doesn't have the markup turned off, um. And then. Currently. We do adhere to, um. These two. So if a holiday falls on a Saturday, so if Christmas falls on a Saturday, it um. Gets observed on the, the day before on Friday, if it falls on a Sunday, it gets observed on the, the day after on Monday. This is new, correct, Joyce?
It's new language, it's not new in the way that we've observed it in the past.
But new language in the policy.
Yes.
Okay. And then this would be removed.
So that means like Christmas on a Saturday? The town hall would be closed that Friday?
Correct.
And Thursday, it's uh, until noon?
Correct.
Okay.
Except if Christmas falls on, if Christmas Day specifically falls on a Monday with this new language. Um, town hall will observe Christmas Eve. On Monday and Christmas Day on Tuesday. Which I, you know.
Why?
I don't know, Joyce, is there a, was there feedback, or did you see this somewhere else?
Well, if Christmas falls on Monday, how do you celebrate Christmas Eve, so it would be Monday, yes, I. This, this is how we have done it in the past, so I just added the language.
So. Christmas fell on Monday. Oh, I see, because Christmas Eve.
So if Christmas. Monday, celebrate Christmas Eve with a Friday before. As a half day, right?
I mean, we could replace this. With, um. Or we could replace, you know, some of. We could redo this language so that it says if. Um. If Christmas falls on a Monday, town hall would observe Christmas Eve on the preceding Friday.
Right.
That makes more sense to me. Otherwise, does this, does this imply that town hall is open on Monday, on Christmas Day, until noon?
No.
No, cause it, it will be closed. Any. Any weekday, you'll close it.
Right. Yeah, those exceptions are only if a recognized. Holiday in the list above falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, or that specific. That third specific exception, if Christmas Day falls on a Monday, the town hall would observe Christmas Eve on the preceding Friday, which I just changed.
On the, yeah, Friday, that, that makes more sense to me, but, but that's not what it just said earlier, right?
Right, it was to.
Then Monday, so Christmas Eve on Monday is that, I mean. Right, I mean, that's, I mean, the world is. Suddenly Christmas on Monday, but. Okay, that makes it more sense. Friday.
And then, um, Joyce, do you know why this was in there, which is very difficult to read? Again, it's very cumbersome, if one of the three calendar specifics, so there were these calendar specific days. Um, if one falls on a Sunday, town hall shall close the following Monday, but if one of those three days falls on a Saturday. I feel like the Tin Man right now, um. Qualified employees as described above shall be awarded one day of paid time off in that fiscal year, even if they typically do not qualify for other paid time. Seems very cumbersome, um. Likely. A little bit of a snap, uh, just difficult to, to track and keep track of. And I think this makes it cleaner, but Joyce, was there a reason why that was put in?
That was a prior board's decision.
Okay. And then we just cleaned up the language for the holiday pay rate, and there weren't like these subcategories with formatted. So that you could sort of follow the flow of the document a little bit better. Um. This was, there was nothing changing about this, correct, Joyce? It's straight time. And the number of hours, that's how it's calculated. Correct, so for like an hourly employee, working on a Monday or. Normal working day of a Thursday, et cetera. And are there any stipulations that we need to address as far as the union employees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then we just tidied up this language to, first selectmen may close town hall for any reason, the most common of which is a web, is weather related. You want to see this, um, just as a clean? Document? To vote on it?
I think so.
I, I. Think you've made all the changes except for New Year's ever.
Except for what?
New Year's ever. Is really, uh.
Where is that, oh, look at that. I just typed that in there. I think I can pretty quickly do that. You should have had all of track changes turned on, apologies, did not. Alright. There we go, clean document. Let me know if I'm scrolling too fast.
No. I think that is good.
Alrighty, anybody wanna make a motion? Be crazy?
I would. Move that we accept the. Updated town. Call closure. Policy.
Second. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you, thanks Joyce for starting this ball rolling. Eight point four. Um, draft updated Town of Kent ordinance eighteen point seven tax abatement ordinance for volunteer emergency services personnel. So I received an email from the KVFD president, John Russell, today, um. That the executive, their executive committee made a motion at their meeting Monday night. To request a special meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Town Council to discuss the ordinance. So, um. I'd like to pull out our calendars and see if we can um, do either a June sixth or June seventh. Evening meeting.
Seventh is easier. But I could do either.
I'm busy on the sixth in the evening, so seventh is open at the moment.
Okay.
Are you talking evening, evening, like six or seven, or are you talking four or five?
Um, I'm talking seven, uh seven o'clock, I think that was. You know, most of the executive committee. I think by then they would be able to get home from their day jobs and get a little dinner and be ready at seven.
Seven o'clock.
June seventh?
Sounds good.
Alrighty.
Is there something specific we should be looking at here? Is it, is the issue options one, two, or three in section number three?
Um, I'm gonna.
I would think that would be part of our discussion.
Yeah, so um I'm just gonna pull in John Russell cuz he's here and um. If you'd like to just. Give us a little bit more insight there.
Sure, the the referring to the the most recent draft uh five point eighteen. Uh, and the options, options uh one, two, or three at the bottom of that first page. It is a an area that we're, we think really needs uh more consideration um. And again, going back to the. The 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 critical interpretation of statute about. Uh, the ability of the selectman to change the abatement amount year to year. Uh, continues to be a sticking point uh unresolved, and I think the the executive committee. Really felt like uh um rather than get into the nitty gritty at at this meeting, we'd be better off. Um, because four, four P M on a weekday is really tough, as Jean pointed out for a lot of us. At another time.
That's good, I'm okay with that.
Great, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Ready. Um, moving along, draft updated job descriptions, um I was. My plan to have the assessors assistant and first selectmen drafts uh in the folder, but I was not able to get there. Um. It's funny how you, I thought, oh, it's just, you know, we're just moving across the hall. How complicated could it be? Um, just wasn't able to make it happen, so we'll keep this on there for next month, we'll get them out. The next uh eight point six, the streetscape phase one change orders, I need to loop back around with. Um, Mike Doherty on that and actually re-watch the last month's meeting. So that I can come back with a, you know, cogent update for you all, as is with the Kent Town Center, I've not been able to connect with the. Um, the board uh chair there, so um and we might be able to put it on the the meeting on the first. A couple of these things, but um I will check back in with them. And uh the building inspector contract, so I, Joe Manley stopped up this afternoon and he and I are gonna sit down next Friday. And um discuss, because this is my first time going through this process. It expires the end of next month, so um I just wanna get more information. And um from Joe and understand the contract better. And I think that is in the folder, though, correct?
It is, yes.
So um. I will do that in the next couple of weeks, and again, a a bunch of this, we might be able to get on one of these two special meetings that are coming up. Eight point nine, the deep sustainable materials management grant and food scrap pilot program update um. It's, we're moving forward, we had a trash talk two weeks ago, we have another one in two more weeks. Uh, where um the executive director of H R A is gonna come back. That one will likely be exclusively on Zoom, we had many more people on the um attending virtually than we did in person. So we'll likely uh hold that over Zoom. There were a lot of really great questions Jen included in the registration form. For folks to ask questions, so she was able to take the many, many, we got probably thirty questions or so. And um sort of build her slide deck from that, so it answered a lot of the questions and. It gave her insight into what are the pinch points for people, there was a discussion about. Um, the bag size and things like that, and this is all new for us, so. Um, I think that was a great sort of first level, and then this next one will be a little bit of a deeper dive, no pun intended. But the goal is to implement on um. Uh, July first, so Jen is. There's, there's also a lot of bills that are related to waste management in the legis, in the legislature right now. And she's very busy with those, but um she's also, she will also, you know. Get focused and we just have to have a bunch of more conversations with Rick, we need a little bit more data, which we have, we just have to sort of crunch through. The tonnage that we use now, set benchmarks um and then have plan for more of those public education. Uh, sessions, and during the year-long pilot. She now has uh one and a half more employees, so she'll be bringing them up. To the transfer station during our pilot program to educate the public, just be there to answer questions, things like that, so that Rick and. And his team can continue to do their job and and they'll be there to just focus on. The pilot program and um help our residents make this um change.
Um, eight point. When will the board of select be making a decision on when um the transfer station applications will be going out and what will be charging?
Yes, so we'll have to do a special meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, cuz I would normally be sending them out this weekend over the holiday weekend.
Yep. Yeah, it's, we were, we've been waiting a long time to hear back from deep on this, uh many, many, many months. And. We got the notification, we get the notification, unfortunately, it's way closer to the new permit. Um, you know, the next permit cycle, we were hoping we would have this five months ago. And it would have made for a very different process, but we need to, we Jen still is confident that we can make that July one. Um. Date and give enough time for people to get their permits and everything. Um, eight point ten, I would like to move this out to a special meeting, I think we need to have a couple of um. Cybersecurity professionals here to have this discussion with the board, cuz there's a lot of moving parts, so I'm gonna move that to a special meeting. Probably later in June. Eight point eleven, Swift House update.
Yeah, just to uh to ask where we are with this, I looked at the uh the last regular meeting and um. Uh, uh Jean, you you had talked to a few references uh for the, for the architects, um and uh, you know, the needs assessment, the money. Is in, is in the proposed budgets, um and um just um. You know, I you you were gonna try to get a document, I think, to us based on the conversations you've had with the references. Just wanna know, wh- where do we stand with this, cuz I think.
I never heard back from the third reference, but I can send out the two others, they were. Nothing but good news, they had a great experience, they work well with them, they knew um. You know, they had a good feel for the landscape, whether it was a large project up at High Watch, there were uh two other projects, one of them got back to me. Else were in the state, and that was an older um building, and they were very um knowledgeable about. Um antique buildings and um the, all the fun stuff that comes with those types of buildings, so I can send that out.
Okay. Assuming all of this moves forward, um when, when do you think, when would we talk to with the architects? You know, to to what extent is the subcommittee involved with that? What what do you envision moving forward in the next couple of months?
The, so we have to, we'll have to wait for the um new fiscal year, and then we would probably have them. Um. Come in for a discussion with the board, with the task force here and move forward on, you know.
I'd like to make a suggestion if I could. I'm a little concerned about the fact that a great deal of time has elapsed since we came to the Board of Selectmen and. Asked for the opportunity to hire an architect to work with us on this. And then in December, the R F P went out, and in January, we got responses. And subsequently, we had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen and were asked for our recommendation. Which I think we all agree that one firm was significantly better suited than the other for this. And less expensive, um but nobody, we haven't been in touch with them since then. And I don't think that we can assume that they'll be ready to start, you know, when the new fiscal year starts. Without being in touch with them, so I'd like your authorization, if I could, to contact them and tell them. That we we're hoping to work with them, that we are waiting for the new fiscal year to begin. To see what their schedule is and to suggest that we might have an informal meeting between Jean and me. And whoever the person would be that they would assign to this. Um, uh, project, so that when, when the fiscal year begins. They're available and we're all ready to start work, because there's a building season. And the needs assessment, one of the key parts of that is to identify. Work that really should be done within the budget for this year. What they're, what they think the priorities ought to be. And then, you know, Joyce will have to find people. And you know, we're certainly willing to help with that process to get the work done. And if we don't even meet with them informally in advance. We don't know if they're gonna be available to work with us. So if I could have your authorization to contact them and work with Jean to set up a time that. We could have a preliminary sort of interview meeting. I mean, I also, I feel that it's important always, if you're gonna begin a working relationship with someone, that you have an opportunity. For a face-to-face meeting before the work begins, so. I'd like to be able to go ahead with that, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, we can't do that yet, because, because we don't, the budget has not passed. So we as a municipality need to get that budget passed. And then we need the the town, meaning the Board of Selectmen, needs to um in, you know, enter into. A contract with them, and that needs to go through town council, and we need to create a contract.
This would be like, we can't, this would be more like an interview, which we have not had with them. And an opportunity to talk to them and make sure all is on the same page about the scope of work, the project. This is not hiring them, this is not making a commitment to them, this is. A preliminary meeting, so they know we're seriously interested, that we're going through the budget process. And by that time, you know, by the time we meet, hopefully the budget will be passed. And if we don't contact them at all, come July first, when the new fiscal year begins. They may not be available. They may be committed to other projects and not have anybody to work with us, so I, I think we need to be in touch with them.
Oh, you can't, this, it it's an agreement and a relationship that the. The Board of Selectmen is going to have to have, the task force is definitely going to be involved. But that phone call needs to, the phone call needs to come from me to the vendor. And it needs to come after we have approved a vote, and I don't even know. Joyce, maybe you can remind me, did the Board of Selectmen um. Make any decisions on um. Whether, what to do with their recommendation from the task force, should we officially decide anything? My guess is no, hang on, hang on, Zan, I'm asking Joyce, my guess is no, because we didn't have funding at that point.
Hello? Yes.
Eric, you're on, um you're off mute.
Um, I, I thought we had made a motion to go with their recommendation, um but I have to double check.
I'm, I'm quite sure sure that you made a motion to go with the recommendation. Um, and then it was just a question of finding funding. You know, we, you were trying to find funding during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, but that hasn't occurred. And so, you know, it's currently in the budget for the coming fiscal year. But you can't call a firm and expect that they can start the day the money comes.
Right, right, of course, but as a municipality, we can't engage in a, you know, start a relationship if we don't have the funding. So we have to wait at least until the budget is approved.
Don't you interview people before you offer them a job? I mean, this is what I'm talking about.
We need to have the funding in place, we need to know that we have funding, that we have money to spend. Before we can engage with someone.
I'm not talking, well, we engaged with them by inviting them for a walkthrough, we engaged with them by asking them.
And that was part of a legal R F P process, that was all.
But we've never, we've never met with them or had even a phone conversation. Since then, so they have no idea that we're even interested in working with them, they probably think it's a dead deal. I don't understand the. The reservation about having a conversation with them.
I think we could have a conversation in a week, I mean, the, 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 the budget meeting is a a week from today. Um, so, so if, you know, I mean, i- i- in a week's time, perhaps we can do something, in a week's time, the, you know, we'll know. Officially, you know, if we can afford this, and you know, if if they're busy in July, they're already busy. You you know, I mean, it's it's not, they're not gonna add work this week. Uh, so um, so, so, you know, if 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 the worry is, when do we, when do we meet with them? Um, you know, that that depends on their schedule, but I'm sure that they're busy if they are, so I think we could probably wait a week, and then we'll have something more. Substantial to talk about with them.
Okay, and then. And then we could set up a meeting with them shortly there. Yeah. Okay. And if the budget doesn't pass, we just keep waiting. Hopefully it will.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well, as long as it's in the process and there won't be any further delay after that.
So moving on to number nine, selectmen's reports, I just have a couple of things. Um, Pride Month is coming up, and speaking of resolutions that we signed in the past, um. That will start on June first, and I'm meeting this week with um. Club Getaway, they have a couple of folks um who are amazing at um events and activities. So we're gonna probably partner with them to do some activities during the month. Um, we will fly the pride flag in accordance with our flag policy. That'll go up on June first, so I'll have more to share about the activities um. That we hope to get um to happen. Uh, the Cemetery Association reached out a couple of weeks ago, and um they, they're um. The potters reached out and I had a lovely conversation with them just about um some future thoughts they have about. Um, how they're going to sort of proceed through their um. Their history and um what they're capable, um what they feel their capabilities are gonna be in the future. Um, the board chair was, I believe, out of the country for a few weeks, and so I'm just waiting for a call from them to schedule a meeting. And so I'm just waiting for a call from them to schedule a meeting to have an initial discussion and then I'll have something to bring back to the board on that. Um, we received the replacement costs for the Veterans Memorial and the Civil War Memorial, and so those will be now. At, not added, but Karma will update our insurance policy on those. One of the things that I, that was a, um, point of discussion when I was talking to Gary Heaney was. The possibility of creating some more protection around the Civil War Memorial and I'm gonna, don't mean to put you on the spot, Rick. Um, I know those concrete planters are quite heavy. Um, I, I know they also have moved around. Based on a couple of minor motor vehicle accidents that have happened. He really talked about even being able to install low. Bollards that would help deflect either a plow, a state plow, um, or a, you know, a motor vehicle in the, in the event of a. More significant motor vehicle accident. Because, obviously, that monument is very, very valuable to us as a town. Um, the stone that was used to make it does not exist anymore, so whatever. We would need to use to replace it would. It would be quite costly and, um, you know, he had some concerns about that. But I didn't know, Rick, if, if there is anything underneath those concrete planters that you know of and if we should, if you think we should look into. Doing something so that it's protected a little bit more on that. In that, you know, very high traffic area.
What concrete planters are you talking about?
The planters that are at the Civil War Monument.
I don't think they're there for any protection. Those are just for. Planters and if you're thinking about vehicle protection, anything that's even movable like that will become a projectile if something hits it, so.
Yeah, he really was sort of talking about concrete bollards that would.
Yeah. Depending on where we need to put them, that might be an encroachment permit.
Hmm.
We definitely.
Okay, so we can. Say that again?
As I said, we'd have to look into it, I just, so first I've. Been informed with that, so.
Okay, we can also ask out to Karma what their recommendation would be to us, so we'll have more to follow up on that with. And I, that's, I think that's pretty much it for the moment. Like we've gotten a lot. Done today. Rufus Glenn, anything?
I don't have a report, but just a, just a question or two about the Memorial Day Parade. Um, is, is it the same route? Are there any differences? It'll be, what?
Same route.
Same route, okay.
Yep, there was discussion about changing the route, but the. Kent Center School has a lot of logistics that they do right there at the school that. They, it really made sense to, if, if. There is desire to change the route, that to start planning for next year, so that Dave and, you know, the school can. Try to figure out how they would do those logistics, because the kids store their. Their instruments there and they do some practicing in the morning, so if it was to start somewhere else, that would obviously be a heavy lift for them logistically, so. It will be the same route.
Good, okay.
And the.
You go just ask me, that's all, so.
And the community picnic will immediately follow. There's no gap. Have ice cream, have water. And then head down South Hundred Seventh.
Okay, great.
Anything Rufus for us? You're on mute.
With the Cemetery Association. I know they are preparing a detailed list of. What the jobs are, what has to be done. And. Just, we do not want to be put in the same situation as they said Brookfield's in. Where their Cemetery Association closed shop. And Brookfield's caught flat-footed. And, uh, but there, you know, we, we will have to have a serious discussion. As to. What the town is, how, how the town's gonna step in, because.
Yeah.
It, it is. There, there really is not a lot of people. Around that can continue the work that they've been doing on their commission.
Right.
So.
So I know that. They were, I, I think this week was gonna be the week that the, um, their board, their new board chair was back in the country and. Um, so I anticipate, you know, I'll have them in for a meeting and we'll have a discussion and we'll have more to talk about in the next month's meeting.
Right. Yeah.
Great. Alrighty. According to Apple. It is five fifty-six.
Wow, you forgot public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Round two of public comment, this, my phone is about to die. Lynn Harrington, I see your digital hand up.
I just want to say that I will have comments at the next meeting to correct some of the misinformation put forth by the Park and Rec Director earlier. Um, I just couldn't keep up with it all and my feelings were not hurt. That's all.
If you have feedback, if you can, if you can send it to Jared, send it to me, send it to Mike, the chair of the commission, and then we'll. You know, pull it up into the next meeting. That would be great.
Okay, I think I'll make it a public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looking for other waving hands or digital hands, anybody? Don't see any. Alrighty. Seeing none. Now, Apple says it is five fifty-eight. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
They moved.
Thank you so much. I'll get out to a reasonable dinnertime tonight. Thanks, everybody for, I think we've made a lot of good progress. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting. I.
Alright.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.